Village Board made Monday, May fifth, two thousand and twenty-five to order. And we will begin with roll call. Trustee Johnson.
President.
Trustee Booker.
Present.
Trustee Grease.
Here.
Trustee Woods.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Present.
Trustee Owens.
Here.
President Montgomery here. Um, we'd like to invite the audience to join us with the title of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any person's desire to be heard?
We do not, President.
Thank you. Uh, if we don't get a chance to say, welcome to all of our guests on tonight. Um, we understand you have important business to do. The same. Um, the next item on our agenda is uh, electoral officials and staff reports. Those are in your packets. Um, don't know if there's any questions or any clarification that is needed. Trustee Owens.
Uh, this would be for Tyler. Uh, this was in regards to the uh, intergovernmental relation with uh, D C M. About being enjoyed purchasing on the Motorola uh, radio. Um, is, and the question I have is, can you guys communicate with other municipalities that we're doing? Where do you refer to just um, the village of Brown Deer and the fire department?
It's a good question. Um, it all depends on the encryption, if they're encrypted or not. So one of the things they've been talking about, um, that if like all the North, because it like a lot of the North Shore need to be able to speak with each other. Uh, but if one doesn't do this, like the encryption like the others do, then they wouldn't be able to. Uh, so that is one of the concerns of of as we've talked about the joint purchasing. That yeah, if someone doesn't wanna do the same, you know, uh, be have the encryption, then um, you know, that would be a potential issue. Um, so it's something that hasn't been decided on yet. Um, I think when they had that conversation years past, um, all the communities except Shorewood, what else on the same page? Shorewood um, did not want to be encrypted, which means that could be open to the entire public. So if you're doing the police scanners, um, so that was the reason why uh, like about five, seven years ago, they did not do a, an encryption for that. So that'll be something that we'll talk internally and probably at some point, that will be part of a presentation for you as the board. Might even be as soon as the capital improvement plan discussion that we have coming up in, in July seventh. Um, so that's kind of the, the background there.
The reason why I brought that up was that, you know, when I was with the county man about Sheriff's Department, they had the Motorola radios, they've been doing that for oh, uh, at least thirty years or so. I'm just wondering if it goes without saying.
No, no, so like for instance, like Milwaukee, I don't think Milwaukee would any, like even if we had encrypted radios, Milwaukee probably wouldn't. Um, so one of the things that could be done is some of the radios that would be purchased would still not have an encryption. And that would at least allow some of our officers and police department to talk with those departments. So I think even if we were to go encrypted or ha- uh, have most of the radios encrypted, some would still not be encrypted for those purposes.
Cause I was just thinking since uh, things like Motorola is the only player in the game on radios and that.
Yeah, I don't know of another bigger player than that.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I was just thinking, I said, well, if you're gonna buy the same radio that's encrypted, you're not still buying a Motorola radio, hopefully you can get them a deal on since you got to buy. All over.
That's why we're investigating it, cause it's a, you'll see in the C I P coming up in, in July. I mean, this is about a two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollar investment. The big cost, especially for our C P, C I P. I mean, for the property tax that we allocate first is capital, that's like over fifty percent of it right there. So we have to be really strategic in how we go about putting it into the plan. Yeah.
Thank you. That does connect the D P W radios as well, we have Motorola and are able to communicate with the other North Shore and then can hear the police too.
Trustee Castle.
Yeah, I was just curious, why would this, this town would go with radios that are encrypted?
Oh, that's a good question. So this is a, you know, once again, it's a value discussion, there's no right or wrong. Uh, but a lot of public safety departments like the encrypted because it allows them to have, you know, strategic discussions with their police department on positioning. Especially if you were to have a, a public safety emergency, uh, you know, with a, you know, some kind of shooting or if, if someone is, um, you know, in a pursuit um, to be able to have it encrypted and I have a police scanner scan it where the person on the other end can hear your strategy of how you're positioning to get them. So from a stra- strategy perspective for your police department and other public safety departments, that's the main benefit. It allows them to have a private discussion where they can strategize and, and be best positioned for the general public safety of the community. But there's some people on the other side of the discussion that feel that that's public knowledge and they're entitled to that information. Uh, and with being in their department, uh, or, or their, their police department or community's police department. So that's been a pretty, uh, for quite a few years now, that's been a, a big discussion for communities.
Okay, cause I thought it was another channel that they would switch to automatically if it was that type of discussion when they didn't want the public to know. Is that?
Well, that would be if, if some of the radios are encrypted, they'd be able to do that. But if you don't have any radios that are encrypted, I don't know if that you would have the capability of doing that. Yeah, yeah.
If there are no other questions, we will move on to um, agenda item five, which is our consent agenda. And in our consent agenda, we have the consideration of the minutes on our April twenty-first meeting. And also consider approval of the village board, uh, volunteer board commission and committee appointments. And those are in your packet. Um, there are several uh, that are reappointments, there are some that are new. Um, and I don't know if there are any questions, and we do have, uh, the village has two openings, um, for board appeals. And then there's one appointment that the school district needs to make, but other than that, um, we have done quite a bit uh, due diligence to get people, but if you know of anyone's board of appeals meets what, once, twice, maybe a year, a year. Same time of year, um, if you know somebody that might be interested in serving on that committee, there's a five-year uh, commitment. But like I said, it's not a monthly meeting, it's once or twice a year. Uh, Trustee Booker.
But what are you looking for in terms of experience?
So it's, here's the description in the um, in the board pack.
If you know somebody that you, not in the board pack, on the website, but if you know someone that you think, um, ask them to submit their application time.
Yeah, I.
Would be good.
Real estate's good, but honestly, like, uh, it's just a skill set of analytic, you know, being analytical. I think that's important and there's a lot of different professions and fields where you can be analytical. That's the main piece of being able to look at, you know, the, a lot of the information on, on the property assessment information and just making sure that it's, you know, that there is a, you know, that the assessors bring forward something that makes sense.
Right, and this is where people may come to appeal your taxes.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, communities have people that haven't been in real estate at all, but still with the analytical skill set, they've been a real asset, so.
What kind of trustee service?
Um, no.
I, I, I would, yeah, uh, communities would stray away typically is with this, this, this is a body that's kind of determining how you would, you know, divide up the piece of the pie with the tax levy, I mean, that's why we do assessments to begin with. So I think there's a, a perception issue of, you know, a, you know, potentially a village board member going in and, and having a lot of say in that. So that's where it would probably be better for someone not on the, on the village board, just in that role.
Yeah. But if you know, uh, know someone, please have them uh, submit their application online. And if they wanna talk to someone who's serving, to reach out to me or to Nate or Tyler.
Yeah, or Karen.
Yeah, and get more information. Um, any other, if there are no other questions, we do need a motion to approve consent agenda.
I really have the consent agenda.
Is there a second? So it's been moved by Trustee Thompson, and seconded by Trustee Woods to approve consent agenda. Are those in favor? Uh, any opposed? I just have a motion carries, thank you. The next item on our agenda is under new business. Um, A, present North Shore Rotary Park concept and potential consideration. Issue request for proposals by the design engineer for North Shore Rotary Park. How are you gonna either, oh?
No, it's me. Alright, so. Uh, so probably about a year ago, if not two, the North Shore Rotary Club, um, approached the village of Brown Deer with some potential funds that they were looking to use within the village. Um, but they really wanted to focus on like a community oriented, um, focus like idea or topic. Uh, so ideas of public, the farmer's market went rolling around, um, potentially using some of the funds for a slice rig for um, this new concept of a park. So, um, recently we met with the Rotary Club and we began to discuss the scope, the vision and funding possibilities for a new park. Uh, this would be the lot south of Culvers, the old cogia St. Mary's. Um, and so we just kind of brainstormed different ideas and kind of ended up on kind of one cohesive vision for that park, uh, which included some pickleball courts and then some other amenities that would make it a little bit more versatile and more inviting for others that weren't using it just for pickleball. Um, so the next steps, we, to ensure the success of this project, we wanted to start off with an R F P process. So we could get it designed and really to uh, figure out what the cost of this project would be. Um, and then from there, we would kind of take the next step, the construction, bringing out the park, um, just like we have with the ten mile park. Um, so the club currently states that they have two hundred thousand dollars in funds available to put towards this initiative. And with the design process, we hope to find out if that will cover the full cost or if we'll need to explore some supplemental funding uh, through grants or other opportunities like fundraising. Um, and that's kind of the gist of it. The R F P is in your package further, I think it's right after this memo. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to the Rotary Club, just so they can offer some history and some, you know, support to what their mission is for the park.
Thank you, Danny, I appreciate it. My name is Brian Aaron and I am on our Rotary Foundation Board. I've been a member of the Rotary Club for uh, thirty-eight years, being here in uh, Brown Deer. My office is in Brown Deer and I've known them on it for a long time and gotten to know a lot of the people associated with the village. And we really do like the village of Brown Deer. Um, our Rotary Club Foundation has been in existence for approximately forty years. So over that time, we've built up in that state of about two, it fluctuates, of course, with market conditions, about between two hundred and two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Our thought was if we can find a project in the North Shore that would benefit all of the North Shore, not only Brown Deer, but bring people to Brown Deer from other municipalities, it would be a win for our club utilizing our foundation funds as well as for the village of Brown Deer. So the uh, idea behind it is a lot next to Culvers cannot be used really for anything else except a park. Pickleball is growing like crazy throughout the entire state of Wisconsin. If you play pickleball, I have one of my employees, he loves pickleball, that's all I talk about, can't find a place to play. Village of Fox Point, as John German is, uh, one of our club members. And real quick to introduce our club members, we have Jim Molts, his wife Laura, John German, and our current president, Mark Smith. Sorry about that. Um, but with pickleball, uh, there are some limitations due to noise, uh, as you may or may not have read, as I've heard in Fox Point, they don't want pickleball there. Um, there's a sound of the ball bouncing, I'm not quite sure where the annoyance is, but in certain areas, they don't like it. Where the area is that the park would be, we don't have to worry about noise from a pickleball court. It's near the Y M C A, it's near Culvers, it's utilizing the plot of land, it's really not usable for anything else. We would propose putting in approximately six to eight pickleball courts, developing maybe some shade areas, some areas for kids to come. Eventually maybe put up some uh, recreational, jungle gym type things, lack of a better term, that people in the village could utilize. It will bring people from McLeone, it will bring people from Fox Point, River Hills, Bayside, all the surrounding areas into Brown Deer. And it will just build up the image of Brown Deer that much more. Um, our initial goal was to have a matching campaign of seventy-five thousand dollars. For our people who donate will match it, that would put us somewhere around two hundred and seventy-five to three hundred thousand dollars. Which should cover, we think, most of the costs associated with getting the park in. And as time goes on, we feel it can be developed uh, with additional items, as Danny mentioned, for, I, I don't know which, what else we would put in there, but green space, usable space for recreation, and it blends well with the uh, motto for Brown Deer, which is a place to play, right Tyler? I think that's what.
Place to play in the North Shore. The place to play in the North Shore.
The place to play in the North Shore. So we could bring people in, it's gonna be a place to play, it's meeting the need of a current growing trend for pickleball that is, they just don't have enough courts anywhere. I don't know how long I would want, eventually if it fades, it could be converted over tennis courts, basketball courts, et cetera. So our club has some funds, we want to do something with it and we want to do it in the North Shore and, and build it up.
Alright. Naming rights.
Oh, naming rights, yes. Of course, for the North Shore Rotary, our whole uh, ambition is, I had, I saw this years ago when Badger Meter put that park in. I saw that piece of land fifteen, twenty years ago, I'm like, God, that'd been great for the Rotary, we could have done something like that. So now we have this opportunity, it would be called North Shore Rotary Park. That way our uh, foundation would go on in perpetuity, regardless of what happens to the Rotary Club. We'd have that um, naming rights for all those members over the last forty years to contribute to the foundation. Anybody else on the staff have anything they have?
Nice job.
Alright, so that's it.
And questions for Danny or? I do have a quick question, are you sunsetting in Rotary? Or you, you gotta keep, so this is just money you wanna open again, Brown Deer. Okay. Other questions? Trustee, um, Jackson.
I guess that's more of a comment. Uh, for me, you know, I kept hearing the term Rotary Club, Rotary Club. And really got involved with the downtown Milwaukee Rotary Club. And we're going through the same process right now with a park that we're developing, where the Rotary Club is stepping up and donating, they said a minimum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But they also talk about volunteerism from their members. And that's the piece that for me was the most important is that you, you get involved with the project, you still get money, but you stay constantly involved with this project. Is that the view that this Rotary Club is also having, that you stay involved with the project afterwards?
I would hope so, yes, Darryl, that we would have our club come over, you know, do cleanups there, help with, if there's planning things that need to be done. Um, you know, bringing groups, may, our, our Rotary Club tends to emphasize youth and education. So bringing young people into the area and while having them be able to be there and having our members participate with some of it, I'll keep up the love, or I'll keep up the area as time goes on, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
That was a question, you have to keep the campaign, it's about keep, what a goal.
I have, I have questions.
Trustee, uh, once this is done and running in that, would that be a cost per participant, or is it the top?
So, um, in the memo, it says different uh, engagement strategies. So they can range from free to the minimal cost, or you know, if we do rentals, that could be a little bit pricier. Um, but there are opportunities for revenue, but also keeping it a amenity for the community.
I have a question. And so if you look in the document, the first step would be to an R F P, and that schedule is, is in this proposal. Tyler, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanna talk about next steps that i- if the board does approve the R F P, that's where Parks and Rec will lead that process and work uh, congruently in conjunction with uh, the North Shore Rotary. Uh, July seventh would probably be the, the time that a contract would come forward with who the, the, the design and um, uh, the engineering that would be done. Um, and then they will, you know, if that's approved at the July seventh meeting, that's where some concepts would be put in place based on some of the direct dialogue and feedback um, between the two um, agencies. And then we would also have an M O U at that July seventh meeting, and that would really identify the relationship between uh, the Nor- uh, the Rotary and the village. Like, for example, stating like, uh, for the funds to help pay for some of these services, when we would need to receive those donations and how that would be administered. So there would be almost two things that you would be approving at that meeting. And then I think the only other thing to say is we were purposely wanting to work with them on something that would be low ma- uh, routine maintenance, just understanding that we're adding ten mile park and community square over these next few years. So trying to develop a park space that doesn't have like a lot of frequent mowing, like a, a dog park would have that, where we would have to be out there multiple times a week. So this is something that wouldn't really require anywhere near the time commitment for our staff, cause otherwise we're gonna have to be discussing uh, personnel operations and having additional staff to help me, you know, maintain that. So we're trying to think of a usage that would have as low maintenance needs as possible.
I do have a couple of questions, comments. One is, I know that this is next to Culvers. Um, there won't be any bathroom, water. I'm assuming there will be parking would be included in the design. Um, have you thought about, as we start this process, at least engaging Culvers? Cause the people are out there in, in sweat, they go to the bathroom, they go on to the nearest place.
Yeah, Cul- I can take that, Danny. Culvers would definitely be informed. Um, I, I think they will welcome this in open arms. And we, we've talked about it internally, so, so they'll definitely be welcome, but yeah, and even the, the two hotels that are back there too will wanna engage with them, even personal storage to the south, even though it's just, you know, storage, we would engage them too, just knowing they're all adjacent property owners.
I think sooner, sooner than later, because word travels.
Yeah.
And just to be a neighbor of the village, whatever you call it, so that they know. Uh, Trustee Johnson.
You have additional comments, since I'm giving up my dog park, I was hoping I could get a dog. Tyler, my kind of, yeah, uh, cause I know sunset's very loud during the year. Will there be, be lights out there at all, or this would be?
I think we are gonna explore that in the design, but again, it will come down to the cost projected by that design, um, the bid process. If it's way too expensive, that could be something that is like implemented further down the road, once we have more funding for it. Uh, a lot of the parks in Wisconsin face their designs, um, so they could do phase one and, and put all the courts in. Um, phase two could be a different element like lighting or, um, I think we talked about potentially a pre-pet now, or something we do, um, if we do that. Or is that, as long as it's raised, right?
Yeah, so our difficulty out here with any sort of structure excluding like a pavilion or shade structure, open air thing, is we can't put like any sort of dwelling unit, which a bathroom would qualify as. So, uh, you can, but this, because it's in a floodplain, you have to raise it way up. So for instance, we, if you look at the Park Concession Building out here that's being built, and, and when it first started, it kind of looked a little daunting that that was up high, but that's also a floodplain, and so we had to raise that building up, but it's like eighteen inches above the water elevation. This site, I think you have to come up quite a ways, cause that floodplain elevation is so high, which is why we removed the clinic in the first place. So i- it's not to say you can't do it, it just becomes more difficult with raising the, the structure way up on the ground.
But I bring that up, the fact could be a potential phase, like two or three, like down the road, if we decide that, um, the partnership with Culvers isn't working out, and they are, you're great. You know, you could include that as part of the design too, and get, you know, potential costs for that.
And keep in mind that unit is around, you know, a ten mile, like three hundred thousand, just for the unit itself, that's not including the utilities and fill in everything, so you're probably talking like six hundred thousand, just in the bath. On a call.
What we call, we're going all the way there.
Yeah, I mean, with, with the Culvers thing, so I'm a frequent Culvers uh, uh, customer and I know Matt, the owner, pretty well all throughout the years, bringing my family over there and everything, and he is gonna be absolutely thrilled with this. I mean, not speeding for it, but he's been somewhat, um, I wouldn't say complaining, but politely poking about what can be done over at that site. And I think Matt is a business owner, he's gonna have a built-in customer base, I mean, you get hopland pickleball, look, go grab a soda and ice cream right across the street. So we, we would definitely engage him and even look at connecting this property with the Culvers property by adding a path directly to the restroom.
And I know this is down the road, but in terms of entry into that, where would you enter, from Green Bay to where?
Yeah, so there's a current drive entrance, um, right now, and it's still intact, so that would remain. Uh, we, we even have some asphalt that we left, purposely left, assuming that this could get redeveloped in, in the future. It'll leave some rehab work as part of this, but there is actually a slab of parking that's already there currently from one of the clinic. So yeah, that driveway off of Green Bay Road, it's a in, out, to right in, right out, and uh, I don't think you can get across, cause there's most of the median. But yeah, there is an entrance right there off of Green Bay, so there's access.
So you, you'd activate a U car?
Yeah, I think on that site, I can't, well, I picture it in my head, but I don't, I don't think there is a split in the median there. Okay, then yes, you have to enter that trailer and then come in.
Yeah, okay. Um, other, Trustee, okay, did you have a comment?
Yeah, is that along the bike trail?
So we also were looking at this in our little kickoff meeting, so there is a bike trail, but it's across the river. So on the south side of this site, okay, so south of the storage units even. And then we have that new bike trail that runs along Pinyboas and then connects into Village Park over here. Um, that comes out by Glendale East, and you would have to then go down Deerwood to Green Bay Road, which does have sidewalk on it now, and then back up to the site. So without building a bridge over the river, um, that would be your route from the, but you can get there, Mike.
Other questions?
I don't, I agree with. So, uh, as I mentioned, that there's a possibility for some public art, um, so would that be part of the initial phase and what would that look like?
I think it would depend on what we come up with and kind of how it fits in the grand scheme of the whole concept. But I think that it should be, you know, excluded from the design phase.
Maybe other?
I have a comment. I wonder if there's a North Shore signage, are we gonna have a huge sign that says North Shore Rotary Club up here? I'd love to.
Um, some signage, North Shore Rotary, um, you know, over there, obviously recognizing the money that we put in and the effort that we put in for future maintenance and projects there and bringing people in to enjoy the park. And, you know.
We have one in Glendale, by the way, at their park too.
A, a Rotary sign too, that we can purchase for them. And it's not a big deal, except one through one of their gates, the uh, what is that, the south entrance or the west entrance or whatever. Where the parking lot is. And it's, it's just a sign that goes up above the entryway. It says Rotary, North Shore Rotary.
Okay.
And then, what do you give that, twenty-five thousand dollars? Yeah, it was a twenty-five thousand dollar gift. In Glendale.
Well, you have less wood, I mean, the Rotary spell.
Do we have a motion? If you're allowed.
Okay, I'll move to authorize staff to issue a request for proposal for the design and engineering work for the concept, North Shore Rotary Park.
Yes, sir. It, then moved by trustee, trustee Johnson and second by trustee Woods to authorize staff to issue. Moved authorized staff to issue a request for proposal for the design and engineer work for the concept of the North Shore Rotary Park. All those in favor? Any opposed? I have motion here, thank you.
Thank you, I really do appreciate. I do wanna make one statement, being here for thirty, whatever, thirty-six years. The Village has great volunteer board, they have great employees. And it's been an honor working with Matthew and Tyler and Danny and everybody associated, you know, with the Village. And I'm very proud of having my business here all these years. And I really look forward to working with everybody on getting Rotary, uh, our footprint here indefinitely. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mary, can?
Yeah.
Yes. He has a sign on the property, I mean, around the bow.
Yes. We're gonna deliver, provide some mulch, we're gonna have around five yards maybe, we'll see how, how much we can spread out there. Yeah, it's taking care of it, it looks good.
Alright, so Danny, you're up again, Community Square Ice Review, Review for Innovation.
Alright, uh, so I just wanna, wanted to start where this all began. It started with our comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Um, and in part of this process, uh, Van Hall came up with three different concepts for parks. One including the Community Square Park. Um, and with that was the refrigerated ice sheet. Um, and I know trustee Grease, you had a question about the footprint. So this is just a concept, so it doesn't necessarily mean that this is like what our full, you know, vision is. And now that we have like a bigger sheet of ice, um, rather than Winter Club, the, the footprint is a little bit bigger. So we have to rethink kind of that vision for that space. But I think some of the concepts stay the same. You'd want some type of shade structure probably, especially with ice rink. Um, you wanna be able to play light music there, you wanna be able to have people, people gather. Which are some of the key themes and concepts that are in the concept map. Alright, so Community Square, um, it took several phases. So at the time went up, the grading, um, it was a really extensive process. Um, with the filling of the ice rink, uh, they were, the winter club was there twenty-four, seven. Spraying water and making sure the ice was level, um, and they had volunteers around the clock. Um, and then there was the process of like putting the lines, um, and then we had the grand opening. Uh, so just a reminder, this was in agreement to MOU with Milwaukee Winter Club, where they uh, financially supported this endeavor. Um, and there's just like some continued costs that they are being, or are paying for, and what about the utilities? Alright, uh, so next I'll head into the front of your rec, uh, budget and operations. Thank you. Alright, so. Uh, we started with way too many staff, uh, and that was just because it was a new operation. We didn't know what to expect necessarily. So as you can see, that was the bulk of our total repair and cost. Um, it was very high, um, but once we kind of established that we didn't need as much staff. We cut that back to one staff per shift with a sampony driver, uh, sampony driver. So it's very hard to find, so you do pay for a good sampony driver. So that cost is a little bit a part of that as well, just because it is such a specialized, you know, skill. Um, and also with the staff cost, uh, a lot of that was for the Milwaukee Winter Club use. During the week, Monday through Thursday for practices, because the sampony was clearing the ice two to three times in between each practice. Uh, cause they were, they were taking a lot of usage out of the ice. Um, it should be noted that the overall electrical was eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. But with the four-seventh supplement in the MOU, our total cost was only four thousand seven hundred and eighty-five. So I mean, we were able to cut on some of the recurring costs as well. And then, as you can see, our total one-time cost, um, that we made fell on, you know, setting it up for the future. So storage, equipment, um, a few special events, uh, items and ice gates for the bulk of that outside of the storage. But with those ice gates, those will continue on with us to the next few seasons. Uh, so this is a nice overview of our most popular days, and just kind of a general overview of our admissions. Um, our biggest user group was youth. Um, and our rates originally for admissions was higher, but based off of feedback from the community after the grand opening. We did reduce those rates. So, uh, everybody only had to pay ten dollars or less, and that included ice skate rentals with their admission cost.
And can, can we go back to?
The expensive?
The, the, the one with the patch, yeah. The staff cost was the timeline?
Uh, so that was the whole season, but uh, like I said, like a lot of that's gonna be sampony cost, and that's Monday through Thursday.
I mean, it's terrible, I can remember kickoff, was it?
Yeah, you remember like from November to March, like the exact dates?
Oh, the grand opening was November twenty-second.
So November and March, correct.
And maybe in the future, it could potentially be earlier, it'll be running to some, you know, things with the grading and the electrical and getting it all in running. So it could potentially be all of November and part of October, or just all of November. So like I said, those were the rates, all under ten dollars. Um, our total emissions were a thousand three hundred and sixty-one. This means not a pound necessarily for our vogo days, um, or tips it, no, it does. So we had some vogo days, so that is the full total. And then we had a total of five hundred and thirty skate rental. Uh, so a total revenue of ten thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars.
And do our rates compare to other rings?
I would say that it were cheaper than other rings. Uh, the only other one that is probably cheaper would be Consider Redaro. Uh, because if you put your own skates, you get in for free. But others not were comparable, if not cheaper. So some strategies heading into two thousand and five, two thousand, two thousand and twenty, oh my gosh. Twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, we've been, uh, changed the hours of operation and break open hockey hours by age group. We noticed that open hockey hours more utilized as, uh, predominantly, just because I think older kids. More afraid of tackling younger kids and parents that want their young kids interacting with sixteen-year-olds. So we're gonna split up those times and hopefully get more engagement at the open hockey hours. Um, we're gonna offer family memberships or punch card systems similar to like we have at the pond. So we already have the structure for that, it's just copy and pasting it into the ring. Um, thank for saying our vogo or tiscom days. Uh, we just wanna be more accessible and operate to larger families, um, and. Thank you for coming on in. Uh, we want to purchase more sturdy skate aids. The ones that we had, uh, were good for the upper age group, but we have a lot of kids that don't know how to skate that are taller. And there are some adults that don't, don't know how to skate. So we just wanna make those skate aids a little bit more useful for everyone.
I know the things that go over the way, or else thing?
Yeah.
You think about seniors and kids too, when you say you want older kids and. The seniors, you know, older people, the little kids. Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, there's a distinction there too.
There's something like could be, I think, um, that's something to explore.
Yeah, cause I would wanna be able to locate it, cause they follow them all, I mean, seriously.
Yeah, and they like to run around and warn our people over too. Um, and then we wanna plan and coordinate some more programming. Um, we're in discussion with the Milwaukee Winter Club on some basketball tournaments that they wanna do for their younger age group. And they think that, um, this could be, there could be two different ones. Region five, which includes all Milwaukee County, uh, so it would be all of the clubs in Milwaukee County that would take part in the region five. And then the larger version of statewide, um, where you include Ozaki, Washington County. Um, where you have a little bit wider of a reach. Uh, like I said, programing, winter skating, winter curl, uh, more special events. And then exploring the option of providing concessions and then increasing our sponsorship pool. So next is our rentals. This was a huge revenue opportunity that we kind of explored a little bit later in the season. Uh, was there, there was a lot of people that expressed some interest, we kind of set it up. Um, and there's some ways to improve it, with a child touch on, on the next slide. But with the, I think we started birthday parties in January as well as the hockey rentals. And we had five total parties and that, we received nine hundred dollars for. And then hockey rentals, uh, about four hundred or four thousand, four hundred dollars from that. And with a total of only twenty rentals. Uh, but like I said, if you only had those starting in January, had you started at the beginning of the season, you would see a much larger number. Cause much like pickleball courts are in demand, ice is in demand. Um, and then it's a lot of older, like adult groups looking just to play, uh, with their friends and other people.
Can you give us the details of the parties? Like how long was it, what was it true to live?
Sure, so it varied, um, from party to party, I think it was a minimum of two hours.
Um, so for the birthday parties, you could do either one hour or two hours. Included in that price was, um, the staff and they would host games for them. They would get all their ice, ice skates free with the rental, they had a max of fifteen kids. And then an additional, I believe it was ten dollars per kid that wanted to skate after that. Um, that was about fifty birthday parties.
No restrooms?
No, but we did partner with the Beer Garden and they did offer a package for the individuals that didn't want to utilize that.
But most people brought, like their cakes and things like that. Um, so some strategies moving into the next season, increased promotion and advertising early for those rental opportunities. Offer Friday and Saturday evenings, uh, we have the potential of during the day hours. So we could do, you know, networking events, or you could have like businesses committing for, you know, like team building exercises. Things like that. Um, and then we're gonna review it about with the birthday rental packages and implement changes as needed. So take into consideration, how can we get boot a little, you know, as part of that package? So that it's not two separate costs. So we had three, two events run by us and then partnered with the farmers market and. The Beer Garden for the third. So New Year's Eve was our New Year's Eve, um, event. If, I think we've learned a lot from that event. We learned that we need to keep the cost low and just, uh, just be more accessible to people. I, we originally priced it a little bit higher, thinking that people would come for just like all the goodies and treats. But I think a lot of people didn't realize what was included with that. So decreased in the price of our events and just trying to get more people rather than pricing it high and meeting our, covering our costs. Um, so we saw much more success in our family tennis skate. That was the supply wanna get going, um, and could gain and you have, you had an opportunity to win like a free. Um, skate pass for to be player in the season. Uh, so the winter pop-up markets was that collaborative effort. Uh, so we had fun on getting one on those nights, the Beer Garden had fair sales. And then, um, Kerry posted the pop-up first market, so those were really successful. If you went attended, you saw a lot of people from the community and outside on these things. Alright, so this one has been possible without Milwaukee Winter Club. So I'm just gonna touch a little bit on, um, who they are, how much they contributed, um. So this was their total cost of expenses for the season. Um, as you can see, the bulk of it was the tech costs and they even admitted they didn't realize that those costs would be this much. Um, so they covered all of those expenses on their own. But I just wanted to give kind of an overview of what they spent. So their club is made up of three hundred and twenty players. Uh, they held two hundred and fifty-two practices at the ice rink. Uh, they have held thirty games and they had thirty teams from seven different, thirty teams from seven different ortho associations. From across, um, the state. So that's pretty good for a range of people coming into our community. And I know that a lot of those families utilized the Beer Garden, they attended Litters Market, Pocahontas, Crystal Stelling. So it really did activate that space over the weekend. They held one event, it was try hockey for free. This was, um, an event that they went through, uh, like we say, hockey. So they just, uh, it was free, it was on February twenty-second from two thirty to three thirty. And registration was through the winter club and they had a total of forty to fifty skaters that day. And it was ages four to nine and it was called that, so girls and boys. And we have the opportunity to run more of these with Milwaukee Winter Club, or we can connect with, let's say, hockey on our future. Alright, so big picture wise, um. Milwaukee Winter Club spending is unsustainable. This is where we have applied in one piece for pedal funding in the two, two point five million to make a more permanent structure and facility. Other, we are exploring some other grant opportunities if we don't get that funding, but we're hoping that we do get that funding. Um. Uh, so as you can see, our total, our total expense was twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and twelve and five cents. And our total revenue was fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-six, with a loss of twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and five cents. Um, but it should be stated that back on slide six, we had a one-time expense cost of four thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. So that would bring, if we were moving forward, kind of with the same spirit of what our costs are this year. That would bring our potential loss down to seven thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars. Uh, so like I mentioned before, the biggest expense on the village act was staff. And we implemented strategies to decrease the number of staff per shift and re-probably staff. And we're looking to implement that in the future. Um, we can't really change the electrical cost, um, but like I mentioned before, seven. Over in Milwaukee, Milwaukee Winter Club was huge. Um, and then two, two other categories, I think, menus are marketing promotion, just getting information out there sooner. And a little wider range, so we'll work with Kerry, the marketing communications coordinator on that. Um, and then this final one is special events and programming, really building those programs up, building exposure through special events. Um and then just as a friendly reminder, the communities where Ice Spring is housed in our. Our park community fund, which will now be renamed Parks Facilities Fund. Um and this fund does receive some tax levies support that the board could determine to increase percentage towards in the future. If we, you know, want to continue down this route of operating this as a D M P.
President Montgomery, I think the only thing I would add, you know, first of all, I just want to thank Danny, Ben, Zoe. I mean, anytime you have a staff take on a whole new initiative like this, it can be a scary endeavor, but. You know, they've hit the ground running and I think they've done an awesome job. So I just want to thank the three of you for. All your efforts, um like trying to find people to be Zamboni drivers, like that's not something you can just find on the street. So there's a lot of effort that goes into it. They're working with a, a new operator at the Beer Garden. Um and, and managing those expectations. There's just a lot of new things with this. So I think, you know, from, from Danny's comments, you know, year one, we didn't really know what to expect. This at least gives us a really good benchmark that. Um I think from a financial perspective, we know that we're going to probably eclipse uh. You know, year two, something better, but it's just something that you need to be aware of in the board that right now. You know, operationally, it would not be financially feasible, but, or sustainable, but there's some measures that can be put in place. That gets us much closer to a net neutral perspective on operational perspect- or uh perspective. So. I think a year or two, we'll be able to see more of a trend on, on the direction that is. And anytime you're starting a new service. You know, once you have year two, year three, and more people find out about it, I think we will see participation go up there too. So. All in all, you know, I didn't know what to expect, but once I saw that number, I don't think that's a very surprising number that, you know, to try to. Get seven thousand more uh to, to, to find a net neutral in the end at least. I, I think that is feasible. Um so you know, I, I have confidence in, in our staff and I think there's a bunch of interest in the community. That we can certainly get there after uh everything we experienced in year one. So. Uh Matthew, I also wanted to thank you and your staff because Public Works did a lot to, to help. Uh with a lot of this as well. Um so I just wanted to thank you for a lot of the time that you put in the, to help make this happen too.
Questions, trustee uh. Danny, you, you mentioned earlier that the Milwaukee uh Winter Club won't be able to sustain the. Costs, the three hundred and forty-two dollars, how long will it take?
So they didn't give us an exact date, but I think each year it's going to get harder and harder for them to raise those funds and I think. That if we get the back over there like I mentioned, like that cost goes away, that's the thing to put back onto them. So uh we could as well have the infrastructure and permanent structures to um. Kind of decrease their cost or just take those on ourselves um and then recover, you know, those. Costs or expenses uh through by just creating a different N F U with them where they just use our ice and it's more of a rental based agreement with them. Like they would with any other ice rink. So the thought of, you know, a permanent structure because the tent was a huge cost for them. Um if we can, if we have cement and put the foils in the cement, you know, now that's decreasing setup. They take down costs because they're not loading up the foils. Um so I think there's ways to do it. It's just a matter of what funding we can secure. Um and I think ultimately that will determine, you know, how long their uh will is uh built for us.
Now you mentioned the permanent structure, that do you need costs or would cost your permanent structure?
So I think when we did our preliminary stuff, originally when this all started, it was probably what? Close to half mil?
Uh close to a million, yeah.
Closer to a million, we're thinking like minimum seven hundred and fifty thousand, but kind of getting upwards to closer to a million. It depends on how loud we want to hear what the sink, but what we're kind of thinking is. An open air pavilion, okay, and then. And then in the winter months, you would drop the shades or like, you know, the tent signing. Uh that would drop and then enclose that for the winter months and then in the summer that would just be removed. A store over at D P W would hold up and then it's an open air pavilion in the, in the summer months.
And there are like communities that the Winter Club have practical to for hockey games and tournaments that have similar, like I do. You know, have put this into practice, so it's just a method of, you know, kind of copying and pasting what other people have um on making it or.
Questions, trustee Jackson.
Yeah, just looking at the number for the first three years, well, first year and thinking over three years. You can pay for what you're talking about, Matthew.
We get it, yeah, right.
So it's a very expensive endeavor um to do this, put it, put it down. I think you probably just need to figure out. Who will limit that long-term investments to do this, because it doesn't make sense to predict type of when each year. We open taking that.
Yeah, for, I think, you know, the Winter Club is invested because they lost uh some great time over at M S O E because they. Uh started the girls program there, so they lost their ice time there and a lot of people in the North Shore and. Outside of the North Shore are looking for ice time, so they're invested because they need the ice space and basically. They get first in fun in here because they're helping us with it. So um. I think if we continue that partnership, I think, and they benefit from it, it's kind of, you know, like I said, it's a partnership. So if once they leave, if they don't want to do it anymore, then I think that's where your concern is, but I'm hoping that like. When that time comes, we already have something in place where we don't necessarily have to rely on their spending.
Oh, just looking at the layout, uh I think it was the second slide in, it's actually. The different direction in what I remember visiting, so. Talk about why the change you had on the second slide.
Sure, so like I mentioned before, that was just a concept design that was put together by the animal based off of um community and. Scott feedback for during the work process. Uh when the Winter Club approached us, they had a much larger ring available. Where this is only, what is it? Sixty by ninety, the Winter Club is like ninety by one twenty, so it's a.
Over two times that.
Yeah, so I mean, so the footprint has to go the other direction and it's bigger. Uh just because it's a different sized ring, um and that was what was available. If, so we didn't have to pay for like getting the ring because they already had. The ring equipment, um so that's essentially why that changed from that to what we have.
So based on that, which size ring are we looking at? Just be permanently or each year? Is it the one that they had out there this year? So this would actually take up more space. Is there ideas that it could be used during the summertime for those things or something else to build out there?
Sure, so we could do that or we did just make a purchase for charps uh to cover the, the. What's there now to make it usable during the off-season, so we could just put the chart over the concrete and use it for. Like kind of a green park space and you can do various amounts of programming, like we're going to do a bank slate there this summer. Uh with the Beer Garden and there's opportunity to do different sports or try different tissues, like you could probably do bocce or. Um different games there too. So there's definitely some concepts, it's just a matter of what that end and, you know. What we end up with will ultimately determine what we expect space for.
So what was the next step? What else to consider?
Um I don't think we're considering anything tonight, but I think overall it's just a, you know, a big picture of like. Do you want to continue supporting these efforts and to what degree? And how long do you kind of, as a board, want to have the staff continue to invest time um in exploring potential, you know. Longevity of this project, um because I think, one, it will be. Probably easier to determine like the trajectory of this if we don't get the funding. Um but because then we'll have to figure out next steps and different funding options. Uh if that. Doesn't come to fruition, then I think it's. Something that you guys have to decide if there's more tax levy dollars that are put towards this or. You know, what the next steps are, but there's no decision this evening.
Yeah, but I just wanted to get an idea, because you, you did a presentation, so when I walked from, walked away from the presentation. Wanted understanding what's next. So for us, we still have to. For me, I think I still need a lot more information related to costs and potential income.
Yeah, let me, yeah, just to tackle that a little more. So when we initially brought the presentation to you last year about the concept and the board blessed it. We had promised to give a summary meeting of how it performed in year one, so that's what's today. The, the board will probably, it'll be another year probably before we really have a decision, because we know that the Winter Club will. Commit to another winner for sure, or for season for sure, so it's going to probably be this time next year. So we're going to have a much better idea, did we get any additional grant funding or not? That might answer the question, but if we do, that's where we'll have a discussion with the board. Based on two years of performance and what you've heard from the community, is this something that you see as that long-term? Permanent investment at Community Square and there would probably be a decision definitely by that point in time. And then there'll also be a checkpoint during the budget process when we present. On the park facilities portion of that special revenue fund. And we do that presentation, that will be also a checkpoint decision too on the operation. So this is just information, but those are the. Next two decisions in mind, probably in about, you know, four months, there'll be that one decision and then about a year from now, another decision. Yeah, yep.
Other questions?
And one question I have is, I, I know that the village is pursuing other funding opportunities. Do you know where center, uh where the club is?
So they've been collaborating with us on the funding that we're actively seeking. Um they have kind of pumped up a certain amount of other resources until. You know what we can, um just so they're not kind of tapping into resources too early. Um and asking for too much or too little, so they've kind of pumped the brakes because they do have some. Uh people kind of waiting in the wings, so they're willing to help us find that financial support. We're just kind of. Kind of playing a waiting game right now.
Other questions? If not, I think this is just a presentation, so no vote, but thank you. And I think that's this question, it really has nothing to do with the, nobody broke our, um, or maybe or nothing like that.
But we do have brokers and we do have like.
Yeah, knowing I heard.
Good. That's because. Next item on our agenda is uh consider approval of ordinance number twenty-five. Oh for ordinance two, require licensure and set in a fee for operating a kennel.
I'll have this one, President Montgomery. This would have been a consent agenda item, but it's an ordinance, so we had to have it on new business. You remember um a, a new act or a, a new business will be coming in along. Tonia there and uh we need to have um. Uh a, a kind of license for that, so this is based on streamlining our, our process. Uh similar to chickens, um and then we did some other research on other kennel fees and licenses. And this was pretty consistent with what we saw, so we just need the board to approve this, so we have this in place for that new business coming in.
And that ordinance is in.
Twenty-five oh four, yeah, in your packet.
In your packet. So the cost is.
It's a hundred dollars for the first twelve and then four dollars for each dog thereafter.
What is he, I can't remember what he talked about. Well, it's going to depend on the size.
Yeah, yeah, that was an, it, it was a range as of right now, so.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Uh trustee Woods and then trustee uh Booker.
Okay, uh we're charging a hundred dollars in the initial fee with four dollars extra for everything over twelve. And the renewal fee is fifty dollars, that's just a blanket, fifty no matter how many dogs.
Correct.
It's just a limited, oh, I'll be dogs that you have. Well, I mean, it's just that we're charging more, four dollars more for every dog. I just wondered if. We would be charging and they had to pay for.
Typically for renewals, it's the same, usually in the initial application, there's more to review, but then once it's established. The, the renewal is a lot easier, so that's why typically in the renewal process, it's just a standard rate.
Trustee Booker.
Yeah, where is this uh facility going to be housed?
Um it's right by Record Heating and Cooling. On Titonia there.
Was that?
There's a pet groomer.
It was a pet groom?
Yeah.
Okay.
I need some time.
Yeah, yeah.
This park was, is it my?
Yeah.
Is that currently, is that currently open or that?
It is currently closed.
It was recently open, but like ads of today it closed.
Trustee. Are you finished with the Vienna? Trustee Grease?
So, okay, so this is paid annually.
Yes.
If they, if they decide on twelve dogs and then they later. Increase the amount, they're just paying again later or? I mean.
The license is an annual, it's an annual fee. So I think this is centered to the question that Jeff asked and Tyler explained, the renewal. Because you don't have to do as much for it.
But I'm saying if later than, if two months later, they say, oh, no, I'm good, now we're going to have fourteen dogs.
Uh. What was the number of that? If, I don't remember what the number was in the development agreement, but I think. He is based on uh the size of the dogs and.
He would most likely have to apply for a new permit if he's not going to have the same number that he's already.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're going to shoot to the max that they expect.
Yeah, because like, let's say someone was planning and having a kennel that would accommodate ten dog, you know, ten dogs and then they changed it for fifty. I mean, that would be a. Even though it's still a dog, I mean, that's a different use where we would want to review that, yeah.
Other questions?
What would be the timeframe for this uh facility to open?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't remember the answer to that question. I, I will, what I can do is I can ask Nate and we will email that to you as a board. I don't remember that on top of my head.
Yeah, because he talked about having to do some work and.
Yeah, it's not right away. I remember that from the last board meeting.
We needed to have this in place because you got to come back to it better for us to have it.
Yeah.
On the books.
Yeah, it's a few months yet.
Other questions? If not, we do need a motion.
I want a motion. I vote to approve ordinance twenty-five uh zero four to require licensure and setting a fee for operating a kennel.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Grease and seconded by trustee Thompson to approve ordinance number twenty-five I N oh four. Require licensure and set in a fee for operating a kennel. With the corresponding schedule, it's in here and because it's been ordinance. We need to roll down both. So trustee uh Booker?
Alright.
Trustee Woods?
Aye.
Trustee Owens?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
Trustee Grease?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
President Montgomery?
Aye.
The uh ordinance is adopted. Or who? Um next item is strategic planning discussion on public works. Flash utilities, so that's what we had. Mike, Matthew, ready?
I'll kick it off, I'll kick it off first. Um give you some public works and then sanitary and. And recycling stuff. So we had a fun twenty, twenty-four, I'll just recap twenty, twenty-four and then get into our. Home two five, new stuff that's going to be happening this summer and some of it's ongoing, they're kind of looking ahead a little bit further. But twenty twenty-four, our biggest accomplishments were, uh number one, we completed Collin Line Road. Uh new construction and that runs. And that went very smoothly. We'll be beating and just kind of going over the final punch list items this fall, which is mainly like just all the landscaping and making sure the drain is just working and some final ones since before we finish that one out. But up on the street, it turned out really well and that was joint with the city of Eckwell. A couple of annual things that we do every year, we just had our annual road paving program. And so that was kind of just right into our ferry castle manner neighborhood right to the north. And then a little bit of some streets off of County Line and some of the frontage roads adjacent to that. Following the road paving program, we typically will then line the sewers. And so that is done as well. This sewer is actually in the village as of now, just doing some of the file televising work and making sure that everything performed well. Um, we had our annual reditching program. Um, and we also replaced sanitary sewer laterals and that was our coordinated project that we do every year with the water utility. So that was down on sixty-first street and that was from Goodrich up to Tower. Um, we also have some final restoration. We always, in the spring, you always kind of leftover work from the previous season, just to make sure everything is growing and looking nice. So our crew will be back down on sixty-first street here the next week or so. Um, we then started a lot of the design work for what I'll talk about next. So we were working with the park interact department on two projects. We had Ten Mile Park, which is on its way. And then also the concession building that's looking pretty short, our virginity park. Um, working with Milwaukee County, ensuring for our reconstruction project. Um, and that is a twenty twenty-six construction cycle. We had a small storm sewer project in the Donjes Woods neighborhood, um, where we were trying to help some drainage into the detention pond. So that was finished last fall as well. We started the design process for our village hall parking lot employee in front. This will be a fall twenty twenty-five project. We see MMSB green infrastructure dollars for that. And then we just had our whole annual equipment purchases. So that's what we had in twenty twenty-four. There's questions on projects that had wrapped up last year or like that. They'll jump into twenty twenty-five.
I'm chatting with a question.
Yeah.
Uh, related to Greg, like, well, the northern part of the road is giving away, collapsed. There's combs out there.
On Bradley Road.
Yeah, brother.
Oh, there was a water main break on Bradley Road. And so that is in our scheduled patches. That'll get patched out into the next week or at most two weeks. So there was like, what, twenty water main breaks in the, or a little bit more? Okay, I don't want to steal your thunder. But that was one of those little reminders. We, we've cut out the patches already and then we have our contractor, MJ comes in and I know Dan's been talking to him, so they'll show up in the village and that'll get patched out here. So, yes, that was a water main break. Yeah.
Well, we hope we next one get that all rolling. We got.
Yeah, that's we're leaving into our twenty twenty-five of long range planning process. So with that said, our current, our twenty twenty-five year, we have a big construction year underway. So again, the, the design was done in twenty-four and now we are currently building the Ten Mile Park and Pod concession building. Both of those are moving along. Um, our very large project for this year is going to be our North Fifty-first Street project from Brown Hill Road into Beach Court. Vinton is our contractor. We approved that at I think our last board meeting, our two before.
Yeah.
So we are currently in the contracting phase of that. Um, the kind of Vinton will get bonded and contract signed and all that. Our contracts from Montgomery to sign shortly. And then we are going to be sending out notices for a public information meeting on this project. Those will go up this week and that is scheduled for Monday, May nineteenth at five P M in the boardroom here. Um, we're going to ask, like I said, a very big wide net on it. It's going to affect a lot of residents with the bridge closure. So that's our big, big project this year. And, uh, it should wrap up. It's going to start here in June and then wrap up mid, mid October. I think that was last board meeting, you approved that thing. So that's our big one this year. Uh, we are currently working through the final design of the Beaver Creek restoration. So that, okay. And I said this at the last board meeting, but I still have two hangers of easement documents to get signed. Um, and that, but I'm, I'm thinking we're going to get there. And so, but Rupert Milton's working on that for us and that will be a fall construction. That will be a late, mid to late summer bidding cycle. Um, we have our village hall parking lot reconstruction that started in twenty twenty-four. We did all the survey work and and soil borings in the parking lot and will be hopefully meeting again soon internally to get that one moving along. But that would also be a fall construction. We want to wait until after the pond season is done before we would begin construction. But we'll likely build this parking lot in halves where, um, you know, build the back half and then employees kind of park up here and then builds a visitor parking that will get built in its own halves. So keep one side live. I'll put the other side in a parking lot and then flip it.
How we got to do that?
Three little pieces. Yes, sidewalk in front of village halls, all getting it done. Our guys, I've had some ideas too. We're going to likely redo the planters that are out front. Um, but you have to redo all the sidewalk up to the front doors here at the village hall. So redo this entire front plaza entrance, I'll call it. And then the sidewalk flinging the diverse on each side. So all the current planters will be on your toe, all sidewalk redo.
You have, you have a design idea?
Yeah. So, so they just did the survey and the soil borings and I have to set up a meeting with them to get our first kind of concept plans.
You'll have to see your performance.
You certainly can do that. Yeah. I think we'll probably need internally a little bit first. Get the, because this affects everyone here in village hall. I know police, everyone's having their own ideas. I know like the police have some stuff they want in the back. I had some ideas to help, but with vibes set up by putting a path like to the pavilion and these sorts of nuances. And I think once we get a concept plan done internally, we can certainly bring that to the board as a presentation and get your input as well. Okay. So that's underway. We have the first, or former first assistance bank demolition project. Um, we just had to open bid to that last week on Thursday. We do have a low bidder that will come to the board here. I think at the next board meeting, may, may that key. Um, and we can say it's public. So Fight, uh, Fight Construction got that one. Very large national contractor. They're actually the one that's currently knocking down Northridge. Right, right down the street and they got this one. We had really tight bays. I think Fight was at like three ninety and then the second place was best construction on the Green Bay. They were three ninety-nine. We had one at like four twenty-three. So we had six or seven total bidders on the project, all very, very tight, which is a good sign.
Those people like the tier stuff.
They do. Well, there's money at that too. So we do have a contractor for that. And then still ongoing with design of the North Shore Boulevard project. Actually also at our May nineteenth meeting, this will be a heavy, heavy public works one. Uh, Mark Hilliard from the county engineer will be back, um, just presenting an update on that project. There'll be, um, bylaws and plans in the fall of twenty-five and then we'll go back to bid. And construction is a March twenty twenty-six start date. That will be our big one in, in twenty twenty-six. Um, working on some Community Square stuff. I know Danny just did her presentation, but now that the tent is removed and the rake is gone. Um, and somebody had asked what are you going to do with this space right now? And so basically it's just kind of a muddy mess. Well, we're going to grade that out. I'm going to have Vinton come over and he's going to level out the site, regrade it. And then we had purchased a bunch of used artificial field turf that our crew will roll out. And I am very confident that by the end of this week, we'll be able to send some nice pictures out or drive by and that will be all green. So Brandon from Vinton, the dozer came back today at Ten Mile and I've just been talking with him and in the next day or two, he will walk that over to, um, to the square and grade that out. Should only take him a couple of hours. And then once that's done and to our crew's satisfaction, we're going to pause everything we're doing in the village and bring everyone over there to start rolling field turf. I think it should look pretty short. We have, we have a good plan for it.
Does that, that, that be water or anything? No, that turn?
No, it's just like the stuff that we got, like camper handle or whatever that's, yeah, just that artificial stuff. It's got like that infill material in it. And we can spread some other stuff in there. Mr. Henning took a piece home and has been trying it. I know it, it works well with chipping a golf ball. When I first went and looked at this stuff to make sure it was okay, they let me take a piece back with us, like a scrap piece and install it in his back.
You're running here.
Right, I know, but sorry. But, uh, yeah, it's Concordia's soccer field. It's something that we got. So I, some guy had to have this farm field, it must have been. And that's what we got. So I think it should turn out pretty nice. We have it right now piled up on the street of Deerwood, but I'm pretty confident by Friday, it's great weather this week. You, you should have had it all day. All right. And then we just have our some annual stuff, our annual sewer identifying project that will be on Fifty-first Street this year, late fall. Um, and then our equipment purchases. So moving ahead, after our big year this year, we still have a bunch of other stuff kind of in the queue. Um, one of the big items, and I put this as high priority, item number four, you don't get to hear me talk about that a lot, maybe around C mom. I, when I present. And this is one of these items that's kind of out of sight, out of mind and no one really thinks about it. But I would argue that it's one of the most important pieces of equipment operationally in the village. Doesn't affect all village homeowners, but for these twelve folks that live up in the northwest corner of the village, that is extremely important to them. So if the lift station ever goes down, you could have catastrophic basement backups and flooding and lots of property damage for basements.
Or even.
That is in the northwest corner of the village. So it's at sixty-seventh and Collin Line Road. So if you ever drive by that corner, right out of the village, you'll see a green cabinet. And that's the controls for the lift station. And then there's this green hatch looking thing. And then that's where all the pumps are. Right below there. There's a manhole in the middle of Collin Line Road and that's what's called the wet belt. So that's where all sewage is draining to and then the pump pumps that all up, up the hill on the Donjes and then it goes on its way via gravity. So the lift station, we've been having some, uh, little issues with the pumps, uh, over the last year. And so we're going to move forward and you'll see this show up in the C I P. We're in a good spot with it right now. I had a company a couple of weeks ago, a sable mechanic that came out and we did some pump maintenance and they gave them a clean bill of health for the time being, but they are old and um, just to replace the pumps themselves is around seventy-five thousand dollars, just, just for the pumps. Well, the whole lift station is extremely old, so we're going to invest money in there. We might as well get all of the other features with the lift station. Um, so that is going to show up into our capital improvement program for the station. But I think for right now, we bought ourselves some time with pump maintenance. We're going to get out of more of the team naked schedule that I've looked at a little bit more often. Um, so that we don't run into a problem. Um, some of the other stuff is just annual reditching, road paving program, sewer lateral replacements. The big project that we'll likely have coming up in the near future is, we were talking about um, you heard Nate with the marketplace, we develop it and some land swaps here and there. Um, we're going to be looking at the Beaver Creek Daylighting Project. We have another large item this year, which we talked about in January. Our refuse contract is up at the end of twenty twenty-five. So we're going to engage um, G F L for contract renewal. And once we get to that point, we'll bring that back and report for discussion. North Green Bay Road Paving, we approved this, the S M A and the S M A at our last meeting and that's from Goodrich to the roundabout. That's like twenty twenty-eight. Um, with our Bradley Road box taller replacement and then what President Montgomery alluded to, our City of Milwaukee joint project of Bradley Road. We did do some mill and overlay work out on Bradley. So we bought ourselves some time on that, but this needs to kind of be an ongoing discussion and engagement with the city to really push them to get a date on that and get that project on books. But more importantly, we've got to replace that box over ahead of time. And then the other thing I didn't put on here, but I thought of it because I sit on these meetings and had one today. Uh, there is a safe roads initiative that the Milwaukee County is, is doing and we are a part of it as a county municipality. Um, and so there is some funding that we happen to, to improve some safety on streets. And one that we identified that pops up a lot, um, kind of comes in cycles, but the intersection of Dean and Sixtieth Street by the school. Um, so, you know, once in a while that'll pop up with kids, you know, walking to and from school and it's a really large intersection. Um, and it is really busy during school times. And even beyond that, just Sixtieth Street in general, from Bradley Road up to Dean. We ever see some problems or accidents happening, it's usually in that stretch, particularly kind of coming northbound. Streets a little bit wide there. And I think there's some stuff that we could do for road diets on that. And to decrease the footprint and make it more pet safe, pet friendly at the Sixtieth and Dean intersection. So that's something that's a little bit, yeah, more out on the horizon. The pavement's in really good shape on Sixtieth Street. That was like a two thousand and ten repaving program. So it's still in really good shape, but, um, that's going to come up, I think, at some point mainly to address some safety. That was a lot. If there's any, any questions, let me know.
Well, Fifty-first Street, County Met and Bradley West also City of Milwaukee.
Yes, that is also another joint city of Milwaukee project. I know that one is going to fit into their cycle a lot easier than our Bradley Road one, because we're really not looking to do much, um, stuff a lot different on that street. It's essentially going to be just a pavement replacement project. Whereas the Bradley one, we kind of want to do the same design that we just finished up at Collin Line. We're going to add the paved shoulder on each side, you know, make that a little safer for people and then add a sidewalk. Either on the south side of the street by the park or maybe if wants to go on the north side, you want Jason to roll the houses on. But yeah, that, that, that's a, a bigger dollar expense that the city would have to commit to versus the, the Fifty-first Street one.
Yeah. Yeah.
I can't remember. When did we meet with the city engineer and all the women? Was that, that'd be two years ago now, I think.
Yeah, that, that was late twenty-two, early twenty-three.
Was it twenty? Yeah. So that needs to, new life needs to be breathed into there. But like I said, with the paving of Bradley Road that we did last year, it did buy us some time as far as drivability on that street.
I did go on back to her now because she was new.
Was.
And I'm sure she was, you know, she just kept dealing with all the dumping tires. Was that what's in her?
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know if the Bradley, I mean, the, kind of after Bradley, if that's in her district, I think that's in Taylor's. We may be dealing with two different, all the persons. Yeah, Taylor's Fifty-first. Yeah, Taylor's Fifty First.
Okay.
So maybe not. Maybe Jack will go.
Okay, yeah, I do appreciate it.
All right. Any questions for Matthew? Just do Johnson.
Yeah, related to Sixtieth and Dean, I didn't think about doing some type of bump outs there.
Yes. Yeah. Exactly. I mean, your bumbles, that's like the perfect word for it. Like, so like where the corners are, you know, they're so far back. Because the paved shoulder just runs straight through the intersection. And if you can just eliminate that by bringing the ped landing or ped ramps closer to that, where the travel lanes are. That's how you can end up reducing how much pavement everyone's gonna cross. So, so yeah, bump outs on that whole intersection, I think, would solve a lot of problems. The other thing you could do, and this has come up, and believe it or not, we don't operate or own any of these in the village. We have them, but we just don't own or operate them. Signalize it. Boom, boom, and signalize the intersection as well. Believe it or not, we don't own or operate any traffic signals in Brown here. They're all either county or state or city.
Matthew, didn't we also talk about some like rapid flash beacons too?
Yes, that was another idea as well.
Those are the blinking yellow lights that when people hit, that helps people, once again, to attract more attention as people are crossing the street.
It's just a really, I mean, I go through there multiple times, you know, throughout the weekend, whatever. It's just a very wide intersection. And that's how you can kind of lose track of whose sides. You know, we haven't had an incident there recently that I know of or, you know, anything major. But if we hear of a CUP concern from parents, that's usually the intersection.
I agree with you. But I know the other thing is the place usually by the time of the park near this church over there, it's a speeding down.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I do have a question because we're in May. And this usually comes up every year, the no mo may.
Oh, well, let me take that because I literally last week talked with Mark Stroh about that. And Police Department will be putting out some information to remind people that you can participate no mo may, but you still have to adhere to the tall grass ordinance. Yeah. So we'll have some education going out this week on that.
Well, I have opinions on that, but.
For another day. Yeah, for another day.
Yeah. So there's been a lot of research. That was a hot topic that came out. That, believe it or not, no mo may started in Dappleton. So that's where it stemmed from. It just caught like wildfire throughout the nation. And there's been a lot of research that no way does that do one thing.
Right.
Okay. And you're very, you have a lot more beneficial if you're gonna create a part of your lawn and put like some of these native like wildflower sections in there. Like apparently the bees, they don't go to the dandelions. They're like a last glass resort if there's something else there. Yeah, they don't want to go over and dandelion or like film the bees, I guess.
My notes have. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So just wanted to kind of talk a little bit about some of the things from the water utility's perspective. I'm not gonna get into too much on our twenty twenty four activities because a lot of it's just what we're required to do by regulations from the DNR, EPA, and from PSC, that we have to do a lot of the annual water collection sampling that we do, maintenance, things like that. We do that every single year. A couple of things I did want to point out. You know, we do do all the water main break repairs and twenty twenty four was a good year for us, but we had eleven in common water main breaks. I think we're done about fourteen or an average is somewhere around eighteen, eighteen to twenty. So I don't know what Matthew was saying earlier. We already hit that by the end of February this year. So this year is hopefully stays quite fresh the year, but we'll see. The other thing, twenty twenty four, we did complete our service line inventory. That was a requirement by the EPA for the new lead acuparal that's coming out. And we identified that we're not having lead services, both public or private in our system. So we're good with that. So we find out that we don't know all, but it might be one out there. But from everything that we've seen so far, our investigation, we haven't seen any lead services. We also did the, like, what EPA calls their unregulated contaminant monitoring rule. Every three years, they come out with a new contaminant that we have to sample for in our distribution system. Twenty twenty four was PFAS, which has been a very big topic. We had about, I think about eighteen to twenty different counties of PFAS that we had to sample for. On our quarterly samples that we're gonna take, we had non-detex on all of them. So we were, we do have PFAS in the water, which we know we do. It's below the level of detection for the sampling, protocol, and test methods that would be used. So it's a very, very, very small. And the last thing I'm there, I don't, once every three years, the DNR does come around and they do what's called a sanitary survey of all our utilities. So last year was our three-year survey. We had, we got painted on one thing, and that was our water tower, which we painted in twenty three. We needed to have a final inspection done. And we were about three months later to get that final inspection done because of some weather delays and whatnot. So that was our only negative thing that they found on the survey, which was the first time that we didn't have any deficiencies since I've been here for about fourteen years. So that was a really good, really good survey for us. So in twenty twenty five, our goals, our initiatives, again, just to provide that safe quality drinking water to all of our customers. You know, those regulatory requirements. We're gonna, in twenty twenty five, there's gonna be two rate case or rate increases for Milwaukee coming. They didn't do one in twenty twenty four. They waited, they're gonna do it in the first or second quarter here in twenty five, simplify, which will probably be about a four percent increase. And then the later half of twenty five, they're saying that they're gonna do a conventional rate case or a full rate case. That usually takes about nine months for the City of Milwaukee to go through that. So I don't see that rate case or that rate increase, if it is an increase, coming until sometime in twenty twenty six. They're required to do that this year, a full rate case this year, because remember they sold their Son of water to the City of Milwaukee, shut it out. Yeah, if you want to leave your son water lock shut, they're required to do a full rate case. Previous meetings that we've had at Milwaukee, when they've been selling water watch out, they've said, well, your rate could go down actually. As we're selling the water watch out. I don't personally believe that. This wasn't the last time rates have gone down. But my fingers crossed. But we'll work with the other wholesale communities on that that we have in the past. And then ahead of the work at Sherman Boulevard in twenty twenty six, we're actually gonna go ahead and be lining the six inch water main that's on the west side of Sherman. We decided to line it because it's in a very difficult area. It's gonna go underneath the sidewalk. It's right next to the power poles that are right there, three deep. Relaying it would cause us to haul it into the roadway underneath the concrete pavement. And so we're gonna line it. We had success with doing that in Titonia about three, four years prior on a toll chain, worked out great. We just opened bids last week and the numbers came back pretty favorable. So we're taking that to the Water Commission later this week before they're approved. And then in our, kind of our three to five year long-term strategy, the biggest is that about five years ago, we started this financial model for the water utility. And at that time, our annual rate return from the PSC was the win. And in twenty nineteen, I think we're just barely above point five percent. So we're kind of breaking even. And so we instituted a plan where we did rate increase. And then we would do these simplified rate increases every year after that. And those simplified rate increases vary. They can begin with three to four percent usually, but in twenty twenty three was eight percent. And it's all based on inflation at the time. So twenty three, we had an eight percent increase, but all that has to say is that our twenty twenty four PSC rate of return was the highest it's been since twenty, what, twenty ten? So we were at seven point eight six percent. So there's a couple of reasons for that. One, I mentioned Milwaukee didn't raise the rates. We had a nice eight percent mini increase to cover inflation before that. And we had a reduced water main rates. So that all was kind of like a really good year for us. And Derek got the PSC reporting last week, so that met our requirements for that as well. I don't think that's gonna be the same case in twenty eighty five here because the brakes go up already and we know that Milwaukee's gonna raise it. So, but I think we've gone from that point where we've been like barely breaking even to now we're in a very healthy spot. We need this benchmark rate return that PSC has for utilities. So I think over the last five years, we've done a really, really good job of putting this in a very good financial place with the utility that we can sustain forward. The biggest thing that we now need to work on is our water mains. And I think we've, I gave that to Karen to hand out to everybody in the group. So there's these data that's in front of you there that this kind of was from our PSC report from twenty twenty four. And it lists all of our water mains by decade. So what I've got highlighted there is our six and eight inch water main from nineteen forty one all the way to nineteen seventy. That's about thirty five percent of our system. And that's also a lot of the system that's given us a lot of problems with these water main rates. So we really wanna target replacing that vintage water main in our system over the next thirty to forty years. Can't do it all at once because that's just way too expensive. But we have been trying to do, been averaging about three hundred thousand dollars a year in water main replacement. We wanna really bump that up to close to nine hundred thousand dollars a year. So we wouldn't be really focused on getting about one percent of our system relayed every year. So the goal would be that in each one of these decade columns, you see about ten percent of the system for each decade, for ten years, all right? Because the water main lasts about a hundred years. So we're trying to get this on a hundred year replacement. I don't like it when we have, you know, twenty one percent, thirty one percent in the first quarter or the seventy of our system is, you know, the majority of our system is in that time. So we wanna try to spread that out because it's a little bit more affordable for our customers. We're not doing this big rate case all at once to kind of pay for all this. There's some other communities that have waited to do this. Shoreway being one of them. Whitefish Bay is another one, where about eighty six percent of the system is all pre nineteen forty. And they're gonna be hit with some pretty big rate increases over the next ten to fifteen years to manage that. And so.
Anything to do with the water?
The lead level.
The lead levels, but also the.
The sinkhole? So the sinkhole is, that has nothing to do with the water. That's on the stormwater side of it. But it's the lead level wells that kind of uncovered this for them and brought us to the length of their boards. And they said, okay, we need to start to do something about it. Because a lot of that put in, like I said, decades ago, and those customers paid for it. People that are there now aren't paying for it because it's all been fully depreciated. They now need to start to pay for the next generation of customers that'll be using the water. So we just kind of wanna spread that out so it's a little bit more even that we don't run into that situation where all of a sudden thirty years from now, we're going, hey, we got fifty percent of our system we need to replace. We wanna be more proactive on it. And financially, we're in a position now where I think we can do that. So in twenty twenty five, our goal is to really work with our Water Commission and with PSC to come up with plans on how to do that. And then move forward and so we can understand what the rate impact is gonna be to our customers. And we wanna maintain our, kind of where we are right now with our rates in the greater Milwaukee area. Sixteen different communities that have surface water, that buy water from surface water plant, they either have it themselves or they buy it from Milwaukee or Shore. And right now, Brown here is the fifth smallest. So we're very affordable compared to other areas in the Milwaukee area. And again, a lot of those communities are gonna be raising their rates because of lead level replacements, main replacements. We're gonna raise our rates because of main replacements. But we still kind of wanna be in that lower order of the utility rates in the greater Milwaukee area. So it's, you know, everything's going up, right? So we wanna try and control the rates as much as possible. So I think we're in a pretty good spot right now. That's kind of what Tyler and I have been talking about over the last couple of months on what our plan is moving forward for the next three to five years. With everything else, I think we've gotten in a pretty good spot. That's kind of our main focus.
So when we do that capital improvement plan presentation and we get to the water utility section, that will be something that we'll start adding to the capital improvement plan. So this is just kind of a preview to that for the board.
And at that time, also, we'll have a better idea. Answer question, not ready to accept. What, what do you think you are aggressive? So many really dangerous phases of that right now.
Any, any questions?
This is kind of different than what this is. I just want to give your staff a compliment. Spectrum came out, oh, a few weeks ago, and they were doing some bearings and tables like that. So your staff came out and they were marking like, you know, for the new paint out or the water main's bad. But some of the houses out there, they couldn't really see the shut off valve. They were kind of like, they were very, and I asked them, I said, well, what do you do when that happens? And I kind of knew you were gonna be at this meeting. So I said, well, I'll ask you. Is that something that responsibility of the homeowner or is that something that you guys come in and kind of unearth?
So the regulations state that access to the shut off valve is from the home is the homeowner's responsibility. So they need to maintain access to it for us to get to it. That doesn't happen, you know. They've been in there a lot of it, you know, since the sixties, right? So trees grow, bushes grow, people plant stuff. We can find it usually and then we'll dig it up. And then sometimes we'll raise it to grade. Otherwise, it's just kind of low to grass level. We kind of will bury it again. And then we market in our GIS system where it's located. So we can come out and find it again. We've got metal detectors that'll find it. But we always try and, if we do locate it, we're always trying to get high enough to make sure that we still access that valve that's down there through the curb stop box. We've had a couple of situations this past winter where we had pipers in a home and then it flooded the home. And we've had to gain access to that valve to shut it off because the, you know, home was vacant.
They were really nice and really informed.
We can go back.
Yeah, I'll do that. Thank you. You're really informed.
Other questions? Comments? This is a part of what the board requested in terms of having reports to come from various departments. What's happened, what the plan is in the long term, what the impact is.
So we'll have the, in the next one, June second, that'll be the library. That'll be the next one.
Thank you, Tom.
Tom, Matthew, thank you, Paul.
Next, maybe on Jim, this is consider appointment of a vice chair. Twenty one, five, twenty six, those four leads. There is document in our in our packet. And I believe Tyler did send out to ask if there was anyone presenting.
Trustee Booker did mention his interest. I don't know if anyone else was interested, but trustee Booker did make it known that he was interested.
Comment based on whenever Jewish person is absent, this is his, I think he shared his order.
Yeah, we, unfortunately, in the code, there are a lot of sections that just say his. And so there would be, yeah, there's a lot of edits that need to be made in the ordinance to do that. So I think what our strategy has been anytime in ordinance has been, you know, for updated, we've been amending that language. So, and we'll continue to do that. But yeah, if we want to do a general sweep of that, I don't know if. So, and we'll continue to do that, but, yeah, if we want to do a general sweep of that, I don't know if Karen, we can kind of get a sense of. I don't, I don't, from a cost perspective, I don't, I don't know how that works with updating our code. Does it, does it change? You do like a full sweep, the whole code of his or her, does it, does it change the cost at all?
We sign a yearly contract, but I can certainly find out.
Okay, that'd be my question there, because you typically, if we change the ordinance, it's just like, you know, it's one work, one section of the code. So there's, we'll, we'll, we'll find a little bit more in that.
It's difficult to show you that, that women were not.
No, it's, yeah.
Anyway.
I'll move to now, there's Trustee Johnson. Those board.
I'll say, I'll say. If they move back, Trustee Johnson, the second back trustee.
That was a good one.
Have them to prove Trustee Booker, the servant vice chair for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six village board meetings. All those in favor? Any opposed? I have a motion here. Congratulations. You got campaign their own.
Well, I'll probably do one meeting the next year.
Because you're not gone very often, so he'll.
Back to the truth, our agenda for this evening, and move a gentleman at seven fifty-one.
Thanks, everyone.